I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent job. Thank you very, very much for coming.
Thank you.
You know, just in case no one did understand that, this is Denfor Weblows-Covskaus from PAC 42, so thank you very much again. Number three, presentation. Japanese exchange students from Whitcomb.
This evening we have Nancy Klein and Rupel Patel with the eight students who traveled from the Whitcomb School to Japan this fall, in addition to English teacher Jeff Clark.
Once again, we have sent a group of students and teachers to Akiruno City. The students were amazing, as you will hear, and the chaperones with me really took to heart the experience and we're hoping, or we're not hoping. Rupel will be coordinating the program. We're transitioning the program from the old to the new. So with that, Jillian?
Saint Augustine once said, "The world is a book, and those who do not travel only read one page." My book has turned into a novel as a result of my time spent in Japan through the Marlboro Akiruno Student Exchange Program. During my time in Japan, I was able to make many new friends, expand my horizons, and open my mind up to new cultures. I learned about their educational system as a student in their schools, and I learned about the history and culture of Japan through my explorations with both the other student ambassadors and my Japanese family. Lastly, I was able to teach my host family and friends about the United States as a representative of Marlboro Public Schools. I am so thankful for this opportunity and have already started saving for my next adventure so that my life novel will continue to grow. Thank you to Ms. Klein for serving as the coordinator for this trip for so many years, and thank you to Mr. Daniels, the Marlboro School Committee, and Mayor Vision for continuing to support this worthwhile learning experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
When I went to Japan, I noticed that there were a lot of things different with the culture, which was a very good experience for me and expanding my horizons. I noticed that in the school environments, they're very, very friendly, and they like to communicate and be very, like, nice to you and polite, and a lot of the foods are different, which allowed me to expand like what everywhere else in the world is like, and it's a very good experience to go on at this age, so young, and I definitely think people should go on it in the future and experience being a student ambassador from Whitcomb and going to Akiruno. And I also think that the host families are amazing there. They treat you very well, and they treat you like they're your actual family, and you're almost a celebrity in the town. It's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was Ryan's very first plane ride, right? Very first trip? And it was always Akiruno.
Going to Japan was the best thing that's ever happened to me, and it always will be. It made me see the world in so many new ways. For example, I never even thought about the responsibilities of the children around the world until I went to Japan. Did you know that the children in Mido Junior High School in Akiruno, Japan have to clean the school every Monday? I really wish they did that here because it makes children learn discipline and respect for their surroundings. I also liked how I could relate to my host brother Teta because he did track, and so did I, but he had to stay until seven at night, when I just have to stay until four. That shows that he will do what he needs to do as a commitment to the sport he loves. I will always remember the people at the school I went to because they welcomed me as if I were a part of the school, not thinking about the fact that I came from a different country. I also want to thank my host family for accepting me as if I were their son. I would also like to thank Mrs. Klein for just always being there when we got homesick and for organizing our amazing trip. And Ms. Klein, I know that I speak for all of us when I say thank you from the bottom of our heart, my heart. And last but not least, thank you for all the Japanese translator and translators and helpers for making our state just a whole lot better.
My trip to Japan was the best.
While I was there, I stayed with an amazing host family, and they were the best people I could have ever asked for. You soon become best friends with your host family and do so many things with them. You learn so much about how they do things differently in Japan. Something I learned was that even though we think of them so differently, they really do the many of the same things that we do at home. At home, at school, and weekend activities were all similar to what we would do here. But even the littlest things had so much detail on how they did it. Thank you to everyone who helped support this trip. It was an amazing experience, and I encourage all of you to do the same. Thanks.
Hello. I love Japan so much. I saw the world in so many other ways, and the most different thing I saw was the Asian style toilet. I strongly would recommend other kids to go because I forgot, I will never forget the experienced teachers and students. The students of Agassi Junior High School were very responsible, nice, and welcoming. They cleaned the classroom and bathroom every day. I think Japan was a good country to visit because it's so different, but at the same time, so similar. One, it is, one difference that stood out to me was how much respect they give to adults. Like, when you meet someone, you bow, and it depends how low you bow, depending on how old they are. I will never forget my host family. My host family went above and beyond every day to make me feel like I was home. They also made me feel like I was a part of their family. I hope one day I will visit Japanese, my Japanese family again. I will very, I am very appreciative of the Japanese staff for putting so much effort into the trip. I also appreciate Marlboro staff, especially Ms. Klein, Ms. Patel, and Mr. Clark. In the school, I've never guessed how much responsibility they have. For example, they have to serve the lunch themselves and clean up. This experience has changed me in many ways. Overall, I've learned so much, and I've made many friends and family throughout this trip.
So, as Nancy said, it's my hope, my want to take over this trip and continue something that was said in Japan by the vice mayor, who was one of the people that started this trip, to encourage world peace, one child at a time, especially during these times. So, I would, you know, continue the relationship between the school committee and the Akiruno exchange trip for Whitcomb, and thank you very much for the experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not going to pass up on this opportunity. Well, I think it was last spring, President Obama, when he was giving out the Teacher of the Year prize, said the best thing a teacher can do for his or her students is to make them more curious about the world, and I think that trips like this create that lifelong curiosity, which leads to lifelong learning. And I know all these eight students were changed for the better, and they grew up fast. I was extremely impressed with the maturity level on their part, and as far as Japan, we learned a lot about respect, about care for one another, kindness, welcoming your visitors, welcoming your guests, and I think it's something that should continue in the future.
Thank you. Questions from the committee? Ms. Tennessee.
Of course. I have to say, I love this program. I mean, I have, you know, for years. I was so fortunate that two of my children were able to participate. Actually, my son and Ms. Patel's son were able to go together, and it's, it is a wonderful opportunity, and I love to hear each of your little snippets that you're able to tell us about experiences. And Oscar, I love that you were able to see the respect that they had between the students and the teachers and the adults, and I hope, which it seems already evident, that you're able to be those ambassadors here in our school district to just do that one child at a time, right? Sharing the love of diversity, and that's one of the wonderful things that Marlboro has, and making sure that we're showing caring and support for each other, and you all are wonderful examples that you got to go over there, and I hope you can continue to be the examples here within our school and continue to let them know about this opportunity because it is an incredible opportunity, just like you had said. So, thanks for being who you are, and thank you for your wonderful statements tonight. Thank you.
Other questions from the committee? Spoiled head joke.
It's not really a question, but I want to say hi to all my friends. We interviewed together. Do you all remember, right? And do you remember back then what you thought this trip might be? And it's so great to see you come back and tell us how it really was, and I'm so proud that all of you got to go and had a great experience. So, thanks for coming back and telling us about it.
Any other questions from the committee? Thank you all very much for coming. Glad you enjoyed the trip.
B, MEF Grant Awards. So, we're happy to accept or to hear about the selection process and the recipients from our school district who were awarded grants from MEF this year. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Mike Brossey, a member of the MEF, and this is the announcement for our 2016-17 Grant Awards. So first, the members of MEF are Valerie Cohen, she's homesick tonight, our fearless leader; there's Aeko Barnan, Michelle Boden-Hedinger, a member; Julie Cronin, David Friss, Heidi Matthews, and Sue Pearl. So, our mission at MEF is to provide funds for new programs and resources that enhance the educational opportunities for the students at Marlboro Public Schools. The programs we support should complement existing curriculum, help as many students as possible, and be self-sustaining. So where does MEF get our funds? From the generous donations from people of Marlboro, city of Marlboro. Individuals, families, organizations, businesses provide the funding we need. We raise money through various community events. We have our semi-annual Thank and Educate program. This spring, we have our Spring Thaw 5K Road Race. Check our website, MEF Online, for details, and there will be flyers coming out for that. We'd like to thank Fish Eye Software. For 12 years in a row, they've supplied a grant for science and math technologies in the schools, and also Caverro and Roth Orthodontics, who for many years have provided a grant for literacy. So how do we select our grant recipients? It's through a blind process. Our two school committee members provide a blind process where they know the, who the applications are and where the school, which schools it goes to, and then we discuss it without that knowledge in creating a non-biased process. How much money has been awarded? For the past nineteen years, MEF has awarded $189,000, fulfilling 169 grant applications. This year, we are happy to announce that we fulfilled all the grant requests this year. Over $6,000 will be awarded to tonight's school committee meeting. And Sue will help present the awards.
So I'm going to call each group up if they'd like to come up to receive their award. Donna Cunningham and the second grade teachers at Jarwick. To Donna Cunningham and all the second grades at Jarwick Elementary School, $2,288 to purchase two Lego Education Simple Machine class solutions, which allow the second graders to make four simple machines. These systems allow the students to construct the machines, talk about them afterwards, and then try to improve and change the machines, encouraging experimentation and creativity. This grant is the recipient of the Fish Eye Endowment to promote science and technology in our schools.
Thank you very much. So, congratulations.
Susan Rosenthal and Richard. To Susan Rosenthal and all the teachers at Richard Elementary School with ADHD students, $1,147 for therapy ball chairs and accessories. This grant will purchase 10 teen adult Aromat ball chairs that have shown to reduce fidgeting and the necessity to move around the classroom that children with ADHD exhibit. In tests, teachers discovered that students left their seats less and were observed to sit and concentrate for longer periods of time, allowing them to increase their ability to listen and attend to academic tasks they're asked to do. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Megan Avalone and Richard. To Megan Avalone and Richard's school, $895 for a Mimio Teach interactive system that will turn their whiteboard into an interactive whiteboard. This equipment will allow the kindergarten students to take an even bigger role in their learning by being able to participate in lessons with interactive technology. Congratulations. Kelly Hall in fifth grade. To Kelly Hall and all of the fifth grade teams at Whitcomb Middle School, $2,000 to help construct steam maker spaces, four portable carts, which will contain resources that the students will use in exploring tools and safety, marking and measuring, documentation, basic electronics, connectors and fasteners, long and short structures, pliables and modables, and fluid flow. These portable carts will be shared by all of the fifth grade teams and can help build confidence and foster creativity, inspire interest in science, technology, engineering, math, and the arts. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Allison Cox, Marlboro High School. To Allison Cox and the Book Club at Marlboro High School, $400 to purchase 50 copies of Adam Silveira's book, More Happy Than Not. The Book Club is hoping to inspire 50 students and staff at the high school to read the book and participate in discussion about it. This award-winning novel, set in the near-future Bronx, confronts race, class, and sexuality in both a heartbreaking and hopeful way, and has been called mandatory reading by the New York Times. This grant is the recipient of the Carvalho and Roth Endowment to promote literacy in our schools.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee?
I want to say something first.
Go ahead.
So, I just wanted to add that these grants this year, we're kind of rebuilding our committee. Last year, we took some time off, and so the amount that we were able to give out this year wasn't as much as we had hoped, but we're working hard to make more for next year. But some of the grants that we're giving out this year are really piloting technology, like at Richard. I know we're, as folks within the district are working on a future technology plan, this was a great opportunity to pilot a new technology and see how it works, and that will help inform the decisions that the district will make later on. And that's the kind of thing that MEF has always strived to do, is to really give teachers an opportunity to try out new things and see how they work and see if we can get them to take off. So, thank you to all the teachers that applied for grants, and we have some frequent flyers that keep coming back for more, which we love to see because you come up with such great ideas, so thanks a lot. So we need, so on the next school commit, can we do it? So we need to move to accept the money. Can we do that without the Mrs. Runlet form?
MEF Grant Award.
Yeah, we could do the paperwork after, okay, so move to accept the funds from MEF to the district on behalf of the grant recipients.
Motion made in secret to accept. Any discussion on that? No, it's on there. All those, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. And to all the people here and at home and everywhere that donated to the cause, this is money that goes right back at the kids, so it's really important to consider the organization when you move forward. So, thank you very, very much. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we're pleased to state that the Metro West Health Foundation has approved a grant for $108,100 to the Marlboro Public Schools for the Whitcomb School Transition Program. Grant funds will be available for two years, starting March 7, 2017. This grant, and we're in the second year of this grant, covers a clinical coordinator and consultant services designed to assist middle school students as they transition back to school after an extended absence. To continue the theme of the Night of Awards, this year, the Marlboro Brigham Family Trust, in its fourth year of issuing grant awards, received a total of 29 applications totaling over $80,000 in money that was requested. Of the 11 organizations that were awarded grant money, three were awarded to MPS as follows. ECC was awarded $714 to integrate literacy into mindfulness, a technique to help students become aware of their body and mind. Richard Elementary School was awarded $3,572 to support the Lunchtime Reading Program, where volunteer adult mentors read aloud to high-risk children, grades one through four. Hildreth School was awarded $2,143 to sponsor a monthly series of inspirational speakers to encourage students to attend and complete their high school experience. These award recipients received their grant money at a special ceremony sponsored by the Brigham Family Trust on Thursday, December 8, at the Marlboro Senior Center, and communications coordinator Reyna Rego, excuse me, serves on this trust. Two of these have already made their way into the packet, and the third will in terms of the grant form, so depending on how you want to handle that at the end of this is your pleasure. Public lookup tool for licensure. Recently, the Department of Education announced a new lookup tool, and I put the hyperlink in there if you want to Google someone's name or look, I shouldn't say Google, but to search the name to see what certifications they have. So you can go ahead and put my name in. I already checked. I'm up to date with my certifications. You'll be happy to know. This allows the general public to find basic information, but as always, this is only basic, and we are, our HR department, if we need to access broader information, we have to do that through the ELAR system, which is Educator, Licensor, and Renewal. Principal Daniels has agreed to the invitation of the Department of Education to try out MCAS questions in science, technology, and engineering in grades five and eight. They'll participate in a voluntary computer-based tryout in June of 2017. This is designed to transition or to help in the transition to the new computer-based testing, as well as to test out the new learning standards. That is the 2016 Massachusetts STE curriculum framework. They're evaluating the questions and the interactive technology. They're not evaluating the student, the school, or the district results. No results will be generated for this. This does not mean that our students in fifth and eighth won't also participate in two regular sessions in science for which they will receive scores and will have accountability for those. I just completed a second round of walkthroughs. I'd like to thank ELL Director Lynn Medallu for accompanying me, the look for this time. We had a targeted look at how our EL population is serviced at the various levels, what supports are in place for them, and how well they are accessing the curriculum. I've invited Lynn and Assistant Director Michelle Blair to our January 10 meeting to talk about some recent changes to access scores, to highlight successes in the EL programming, and to shine a light on areas that will demand more attention as this subgroup grows to over 20 percent of our student population. Included in your information and handouts is one of four Assabett Valley Collaborative Report. I'm required, as a member of the board, to provide to you updates on the collaborative. This school committee report provides links to statutes, regulations, and guidance documents, updates on accomplishments of last year, and highlights of priorities for the Assabett Valley Collaborative this year. One of the major initiatives this year is our potential for applying for a real estate mortgage to relocate the offices and the operational housing. Executive Director Kathy Cummings has been a welcome mentor to me on the board, and she's presented also to our leadership team in central office in her role as an ambassador of inclusive practice. Recently, four of us took part in an outstanding three-day cultural proficiency training. Charlie Coliri, high school principal, Lynn Medallu, EL director, myself, and Melissa Turpak, who is a second grade teacher at Kane Elementary. Finally, there is a flyer for the If Only event that is occurring on January 11. This will be a special screening of the film If Only by James Wahlberg. Students in seventh, eighth, and ninth grade in the public schools will have a chance to see this presentation. There will be an opt-out form that will be presented to them, to the parents before. We'll also have an evening community event that will feature information booths, a screening of the film, and a panel discussion. More to follow on who exactly will be on that panel. We've been meeting regularly with the Marlboro Substance Use Prevention Coalition, and plans are well underway. For the audience at home, this film highlights the use and misuse of prescription and recreational drugs. It's powerful in its message and timeliness, given the epidemic of opioid-related deaths in Massachusetts. The public can register with this flyer. It's on our Facebook page. Several people have tweeted it out. I'm about to update my superintendent page, and I'll put a link there as well. It is a free event, but we'd like to track, make sure that we have, you know, keeping track of how many people are coming. Our thanks to the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, the Marlboro Police Department, and the mayor's office for the role that they've played in collaborating to make this event possible. We're really excited about it. I also wanted to point out that at your place is the recent copy of Panther Pride. Would like to thank Reyna Rego in this. There's a little bit of a different look to it. If you'll notice and look through it, there's some different formatting and what we've asked principals and building leaders to focus on. Reyna has worked hard to highlight teachers as well as students, thinking that this was a little bit more of an interest. Would also like to thank Jim Ash for his cooperation in producing this. One more thing from me. I enjoyed the winter concert the other night. Susan, I thought you did a nice job in the concert band and wind ensemble. Did I get them both? And chorus. I thought I saw you several times, so.
Guess she didn't think you did a good job in the chorus.
No, no. Thank you. It was lovely. It was very good. Any questions?
Any questions from the committee? See none. Executive Director's Primary and Elementary Education Report.
So our executive director of primary and elementary education did come in today and is fighting a really bad cold and left, so Dr. Kerbo will present both reports tonight.
Thank you. Five teachers joined Mary Murphy at the case conference for three days. I've attended many of those conferences in the past, and it's usually a good time, usually a good time to get valuable information. You get information about federal requirements. You get information about federal requirements and new updates in the state requirements. For Title I and Achievement, one of the breakout sessions informed Mary and others there's going to be a major change to accountability. And so, one of the most important changes will be the E L L progress on their access Lynn Medallu shared with me some of the changes in the CUD scores, which will affect which level our students will be at and will be categorized. And I think it will impact the district. Maybe we'll talk more about that next time. Now, let's see, MCAS test design. MCAS 2.0 will go through a change. I saw a PowerPoint presentation, saw some of those changes. And samples of the test design will come out in January. And I think we're going to be a little surprised, but I have faith in our teachers that will prepare our students when test comes in April, March and April. Lastly, for Mary's report, there was a joint professional development committee meeting. Mary and I met with representative teachers from different schools, and we identified next steps in developing a three-year professional development plan. And so, some of the next steps, which is that Mary had spelled out for you, the committee is going to be with Superintendent and get her goals and vision. We're going to pull together some recommendations, long-term plan. We're going to survey our teachers and be able to work together and develop a three-year professional development plan, which will also affect the budget in a positive way. I say it's positive. All depends on how you look at it. For my own report, this is quite sensitive because we are applying for a youth opioid prevention grant. And the reason why we're applying for the grant is that because there's a need in the district. That's why it's sensitive. If we didn't have the need, we wouldn't apply. So, opioid deaths in Marlboro, in Massachusetts, gone over, has gone up 18%. And that was a statistic from 2004, 2014, 2015. In Massachusetts, and we've heard this politically, we've heard this in the news about opioid deaths and opioid abuse. Well, it's going on. It's going on in Marlboro. It's going on in all communities. And so, we decided to pursue a grant that we think will, in the end, help our students. So, we are applying in the amount of $23,694. That's probably not the amount. It's what we're asking for that makes the difference. So, there's three areas in which we're pursuing. One, we'd like to adopt and implement the Botfield Life Skills Program and Curriculum for grades four through eight. That will affect over 1,500 students. And each of those students will get a core program. Elementary is eight lessons. Grade six, seven, and eight students, those 15 weekly sessions. Two, hire a .2 license alcohol and drug counselor, primarily for the Hildreth Alternative High School Program and Marlboro High School. And I, we have students who are seriously at risk for substance abuse, okay? And then, a L A D C would be the right person to provide counseling with, for families and for students. A .2 is really one day a week. And then, thirdly, the, like, we want, we're asking to adopt and implement the Botfield Skills Training Parent Program. And we would offer four workshops over the course of the year. And each workshop is approximately four weeks, about an hour and a half, in which I think would be very helpful to parents. So, on the second page of my handout, you can see the breakdown. Sustainable cost costs about $10,000 a year for student books. Okay? And that's my report. Any questions?
Questions from the committee. Ms. Tennessee.
Thank you. So, quick question on Mary's or comment, really. The P D Committee that was listed in the packet seems like that's a little old.
It is old. That's last year's group.
Right. So, will we anticipate seeing like a new listing of who that committee fairly shortly so that we can understand who that group is?
True.
That would be great. And then, relative to the adoption and the implementation of the skills program in the curriculum, where are you all envisioning that this is going to be intertwined into like our current wellness program? Or is this going to be part of potentially like the enrichment time? I'm just curious as to where.
Oh, it's a great question. And I was, I'm being mindful of the time. That's why I didn't put it in here. So, we would, this would be part of our wellness program, be taught by our wellness teachers. Grades four through eight be implemented during the 2017, 2018 school year. Our teachers would be trained this winter and this spring. So, from January to June will be the training, full implementation, hopefully, will start in September, and then for subsequent years. In subsequent years, once all the students have had their core lessons, then as you go through the grades, grade seven and grade eight, the lessons drop off from 15, and then you get booster sessions, eighth and seventh grade. I believe it's six in the eighth grade. You can even have booster sessions, which I believe is needed in the ninth grade. So, just trying to build.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from the committee? I just want to comment that the last couple of years, I've been trying to get some activity about the opioid issue in the schools, and it hasn't really worked out. And this year, I'm glad to see we're jumping in with both feet. I thank the superintendent. I thank you for your efforts, the whole committee and team. I think, you know, it's great to see that we're finally recognizing and getting as much education as we can to the students and to the parents and the general public because it's a real issue here as well as everywhere else. And thank you for your efforts.
Well, the school support your support, Mayor. Thank you.
Minutes of November 22nd.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
I'm just going to abstain as I was not at the last meeting.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor? Opposed, carries, and recognize that Mr. Walter has stayed from the vote. Public participation. Any public participation? Public participation. Seeing none. Action on progress in N E A S C two-year report from Whitcomb.
Several months ago, this committee asked to hear a progress report on how Whitcomb School was faring with addressing the recommendations that came out of the December 2014 N E A S visit. And at this time, I'm going to ask Donna Roach and Karen, are you a co-chair as well? You're here for support, okay? Principal Daniels, to come on up and give us a synopsis of progress to date, keeping in mind that this report is due on 2/15/17. Thank you.
And just as this is, N E A S C is, the report is an independent piece of work that's produced by the faculty and then presented to the faculty for support and approval, and then to me. When I arrived at Whitcomb, on my desk was the then newly published N E A S C report, which was very informative. As a new principal, gave me a great deal to think about and plan about over the first summer, waiting the arrival of the faculty. We made a number of major scheduling and time allotment and instructional changes at Whitcomb, planned them last year. And so, I reached out to the New England Association to ask them to extend us the courtesy of, rather than having this two-year report be due in September, which would mean that it would have been prepared last April, May, and June before any of these changes were in place, would they allow us to have an extension of six months so that we could offer something more meaningful? They very happily agreed. Donna Roach agreed to chair the two-year report committee, and she and Karen are here tonight to share with you the progress.
Good evening. Currently, we have 11 staff members that have volunteered to write the N E A S C two-year progress report that, as we had mentioned, is due February 15th. They are Kristen Chevallier, Jeff Clark, Angel Davis, Clayton Hobart, Jill Jackson, Jen Pierce, Heather Roach, Karen Savaskas, Andrew Thane, Hanatola, and myself. To date, the committee has met during the October, November P D days, and all 59 N E A S recommendations have been reviewed, categorized, and evidence has been gathered to support the categorization. Please understand that this is a two-year progress report. There's also a five-year progress report prior to the decennial visit in 2024. The N E A S Board wants to see progress being made. If there are recommendations that are categorized as no action, this is normal, and helps the administration see what needs to be done, working towards a five-year progress report and the decennial visit. I want to clarify the categories because we, as a committee, sat, and there were some ones where you felt like you took, you know, dental philosophy, and was like, eh, which way are we going here? Completed. The recommendation has been implemented fully, or an ongoing process has been initiated and is in place to ensure its implementation. In progress. Steps have been taken to carry out the recommendation, but more needs to be done to ensure full implementation. Planned for the future. Although the recommendation has not been progressed beyond the planning stage, it will be carried out as soon as the conditions warrant. Rejected. And we've been told by N E A S that we don't really have the option to do this, but rejected. The recommendation is impractical or invalid because it arose from insufficient observation or relates to circumstances which no longer exist. No action. The recommendation is valid, but has not yet been addressed. I want to give you some examples of, as we're going through the 59, no, I'm not going to do 59, some completed ones and some that are required as we have categorized as being no action. Completed ones. School-aligned, school, pardon me. Align school-wide expectations for social behavior with the developmental level of the middle school child. We have R O A tier one for all students, and we have tier two of that for, in our InstaBoost program. So, we categorize that as being completed. Expand strategies to recognize the achievements of both students and staff. We have, as part of our R O A program, we have walking spaces for staff, Pirate of the Month for staff, R O A tickets for students, and R O A offers referrals, which give them a certificate from their assistant principal. They've asked us to take immediate action to house confidential cumulative records and special education files in a secure location as mandated by state regulations. That has been done. That is completed. The CUM files have been moved to a secure room that is locked 24/7, and the sped files are in a special education office, which is also a locked area. Examples of recommendations categorized as no action. Develop and implement a formal and clearly defined cycle for the review and revision of the mission statement and expectations. Develop explicit academic expectations for learning with a description of the different levels of performance. And lastly, ensure that the daytime building custodial needs are adequate. We currently have one full-time with .5 from 10:30 to 2:30. Are there any questions?
Questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee? Thank you very much for your update.
You're more than welcome. Thank you kindly.
Washington trip to DC.
Principal Daniels has left at your places and updated Whitcomb parent information packet with information regarding the trip to Washington. And he's here to answer any questions about the details of this trip and seeks your approval since it is an overnight trip for the students.
And firstly, my apologies to the committee. I am missing Ms. Pritchard, who was prepared the Washington DC trip in the past, and the first packet that I sent forward, she had titled but not gone beyond that. So, that's where those old documents came from, and this has now been thoroughly vetted for new dates, names, et cetera. The Capital Tours has been the agent that has provided trip arrangements for the four years, oh, three years, and then this upcoming year that the trip has been in place. It's my understanding that after the first and second year, Capital was very cooperative in making changes in places of lodging and other small details. Last year's report was that all of those things were carried out and without problem. So, we once again retained Capital with the understanding that we were awaiting the committee's approval. We did hold a parent information meeting, again, with informing parents that we're awaiting the committee's approval so that they could start to plan the price of the trip at $699 is not a small amount of money. I have spoken with our superintendent and our financial manager regarding the program that we had last year that helped to support many more students who are in trying financial state to attend the, to be part of the trip. We urged every parent to come out and at least listen to the presentation and consider the possibility of being able to go and not to decide in advance that they wouldn't be able to pay for it. We had about 100 people at the information night, and as of now, or as of yesterday, I believe there were 74 folks registered, which is a smaller number than we sent last year, but not much smaller than were registered at the first check-in in December. So, we are asking the committee's continued support for this trip.
Questions from the committee?
Out of curiosity, since the number is a little lower, and we know that we've had some concerns from some families of not necessarily being able to go, but yet, just as we were talking about with the Japanese program, how this kind of opportunity of kind of getting out there can be so beneficial, do you think that there is a way of an additional communication, going home to try and once again encourage more participation that could support if there's needs for financial aid? Just because it is such an incredible opportunity for some families that frankly just may never get to Washington DC, and these students would have a really great opportunity and really is tied into, you know, their future life. So, I would really hope that something could be done to try and encourage more students and more families to look at other opportunities where they may be a little hesitant.
We have continued to promote the trip in daily announcements. Any student who has, or parent who's called to ask, what if, may I? The answer has been yes. Our advice, even if they are unable at this point to make the deposit, is to put your name on the list. Capital Tours has been very cooperative in that area. They have a lot of flexibility for the time being. When we get into the early spring, they need much more solid numbers, but they have enough space reserved to accommodate about 150, but can shrink that without a problem. So, we're continuing to try to encourage folks to sign up. I have taken a number of students over the years to Washington DC and had a long-term relationship with the First Amendment Center and could not agree with you more that it's our heartland of our system.
Any other questions? Entain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the trip to DC and just continued encouragement of kids and families to be involved.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, carries.
Thank the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Acceptance of donations and gifts. M A D E S E, FY17 Title III Language Acquisition Grant, $129,963.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, carries. M A D E S E, FY17 Title III Carryover Language Acquisition Grant, 71...
100. Drop a zero in there.
7,100, sorry.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Motion made.
$7,100.
Motion made to accept $7,100. Motion made to accept seven thousand, one hundred dollars.
Oh, wow.
All those in favor? Oppose, carries. M.A.S.D.E.S.E. FY17 Special Education 240 Grant, $1,291,893.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose, carries. Brigham Family Trust, Richard Elementary School Read to a Child Program.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve, $3,572. All those in favor? Oppose, carries. Brigham Family Trust, Early Childhood Center Mindfulness Program, $714.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Oppose, carries. Thank you. Reports to subcommittees. Any reports? No reports.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Oh, you're going to report something?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
I'm pleased to say that we have reached a tentative agreement with the cafeteria union, waiting on ratification on their end.
We haven't reached anything yet. They need to vote, right?
They have to vote, so I said they have to ratify.
Okay. Thank you very... Do you have a date yet on that?
No. No, we don't.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any other reports to committees? Seeing none. Members forum. Ms. Tennessee?
Based upon the conversation about Washington DC trip, I would love that we have some conversation about fundraising or fundraising activities. I know that there had been some discussion previously, and that some of that had gone away, but I think in light of the opportunities and the continued economic challenges that are presenting our community in different ways, I think it really is something that we need to take a look at what opportunities may be out there, instead of just turning our heads to it. So I'd like to suggest that we move forward and having some more thorough discussions about what are fundraising opportunities that may be okay to do and what may not, because I understand that there are certain areas that we can't go near, but I think just considering our challenges, we need to look at opportunities.
Thank you.
Two things. One, to piggyback on that, I had suggested it last year, but on the fundraising that the fundraising needs to be looked at as it starts in fifth grade for the eighth-grade trip. So a class fundraising that's going on, so that there's no, you can't start in September and expect a commitment in December from these kids, but if they know in fifth grade that they're, that's their goal, is in three years, they're going to have something to take off that price.
Like they do for graduation.
Yeah, exactly. A class fund of some kind that they can build towards Washington and whatever, and maybe it becomes a community-based type thing, too, that they work towards, but I think it needs a bigger conversation. Second thing is, I've reviewed the warrant with Mr. Bergeron and have signed it, since, again, I didn't hear from anyone.
Fantastic.
Can I make a suggestion about this discussion? Does it make sense for it to take place in policy? I mean, do we need to...
We have mentioned that previously, when Mr. Langlois was here, we had some discussions about a policy, but yet I feel like that was not something that was interested in being entertained very much. I think it would be great to move forward, because as we know, there are groups that are associated with the schools that are fundraising. I think we need to be really open-minded about understanding the challenges, and that's fine if policy is a place to start. I'm more than happy to take it up in there.
Because, I mean, I don't think it's our domain to dictate that it starts in fifth grade, but I think we need to be clear about what can be done, what can't be done, what the rules are, and at least set a framework so that principals or whoever else is going to be taking it, at least knows these are the rules and where to go from there. So I...
I do. Thank you.
I guess I'm referring it to policy to put on our next agenda.
Excellent. Thanks.
It's on.
The motion to refer the issue to policy. All those in favor? Oppose, carries. Anything else from the members? Anything else from members?
Mrs. Matthews.
What's that? Mrs. Matthews?
Well, it's the last one before the holidays, so I wanted to wish everybody a very nice holiday season and a Happy New Year.
That is very nice, and I second that. Anything else from the members?
Hugs from the members.
See?
Move to adjourn. No?
There's nothing on here. Why's that on there?
Oh.
No.
Ax that.
No, ax that.
All right. On a motion to adjourn, all those in favor? Oppose, carries. Have a great holiday season. Thank you very much.